Here at City Hall, who would raise, please rise for the invocation. Introduce yourself.
My name is Brad Rogers. I'm one of the pastors at First Presbyterian Church in Benita Springs. It's an honor to be able to lead the invocation for you all today. Invite you to bow your heads and hearts and join with me in a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we give you all thanks and praise and honor and glory, for you have given us so many gifts, not least of which is the privilege of living in this beautiful part of your world. We thank you, oh Lord, for the men and women who are responsible for governing and leading in this place, and we pray that you would give them wisdom and insight and understanding into how to best steward the resources that you have entrusted to us. We thank you, oh Lord, for the brave men and women who protect us, who keep us safe, those who are first responders and police. We ask that you would protect them, in addition to protecting those who are involved with the education of our children and students in our community. We give you thanks, Lord, and entrust ourselves to you for this meeting, and pray your blessing upon us in the name of the God in whom I trust. Amen.
Pledge allegiance on three, one, two.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I see. I guess we go to roll call, huh?
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Okay. Number six. No, public comment, I'm sorry. Here we got public comment, and we got Ron George.
Yep. So it's Ron George, Little Hickory Island. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the fact that I know last year I was sort of beating you all down to get to that .8000 millage rate. And this year, I guess, I looked at all the numbers and I realized that the budget with the .8173 rate would actually increase about 15% with the increase in property values, et cetera. So, but I also realize that you're intending on hiring another two sheriff officers for the city, and you're going to be dealing with the rest of the hurricane recovery. So I guess what I'm trying to say is I'm okay this year, but next year I'm going to be back and holding it maybe to a different standard as far as the taxes go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? Somebody walking in the door. Public comment? No, I guess not. Okay, number six. Final levying. I make a motion we go back to the .8000.
Second.
Mayor, for the record, could we have the clerk read the full title?
This is a resolution of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, Lee County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes for the City of Benita Springs for fiscal year 2023-2024, whereas the City of Benita Springs on September 20th, 2023, adopted fiscal year 2023-2024 final millage rate following a public hearing as required by Florida statute 200.065. And whereas the gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempt from taxation within the City of Benita Springs has been certified by the Lee County Property Appraiser to the City of Benita Springs as $15,597,955,768. Now therefore be resolved by the City of Benita Springs. Number one, the fiscal year 2023-2024 final ad valorem operating millage rate is hereby adopted at .8173 mils or .8173 per $1,000 of assessed property value, which is greater than the rollback rate of .7169 mils by 14%. And the levy of an annual tax for Sid year is made. Number two, the final millage rate is established to provide funding for the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget, and the resulting increase in ad valorem tax revenues is necessary to fund various stormwater improvements, transportation improvements, environmental protection projects, community aesthetic projects, and other capital projects. Number three, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by city council.
Okay, I made a motion. It's been seconded. It's out of order. Any comment on it? I'd like to make a comment. Any other comments? We don't need the money. The city doesn't need the money. I was elected by the people, not by the government. I'm going to be straightforward and honest. They could have, instead of taking $400,000 out of the operating budget and put it into the emergency hurricane refund, which has $6 million, so now it's at $6,400,000, instead of leaving it in the operating budget. I think they worked to make it look like they needed the extra $250,000. I don't think they need it. They're taking people's lunch money, and I was elected by the people, not by the government.
I got to call Matt.
Anybody else?
I do.
Yes, Fred.
Well, I think I'm the only one on council that was here when a hurricane called Irma came to town. And we had at that time an $8 million reserve. And guess what? We spent all of that, and we didn't get it all back. And we need to be back up to that kind of money. And right now we got $6 million, but we really don't have $6. We got $2 million of that as a three-year loan that probably we'll have to pay back. But even if we don't, we need to get up, back up to where we were. And the costs have gone up on any of the stuff we would be doing from when Irma came to visit us by one heck of a lot. So that's why.
Who was the city manager, Irma? It wasn't, it wasn't.
It was Carl Swain.
Carl Swain.
It wasn't Arlene.
Wasn't Arlene.
That's right.
So what's.
Arlene got us through this last storm quite well.
Numbers don't lie. We had $8 million bucks. Now we have $6 million, but of the six, we only have four that we own. So that's where.
That's for a storm, if we have a storm. If we don't have a storm, we're wasting, we're stealing the people's money.
We didn't know we were going to have a storm when Irma came.
Anyways, I'm not going to debate you.
Could we do roll call?
Call the question.
Councilmember Bogaz.
No.
Councilmember Purdon.
Yes.
Councilmember Carr.
No.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Yes.
Councilmember Corey.
No.
Councilmember Folic.
No.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
No.
The motion fails.
I make a motion that we keep the millage at .8173, as it is currently. Second.
Any comments on this? Again, I don't think we need.
Was that on what is on the, it's .8173? Is that what you were saying?
Councilmember Purdon.
No.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
No.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to, after the, well, go ahead and read the next item.
This is a resolution of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, Lee County, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2023-2024, whereas the City of Benita Springs on September 20th, 2023, held a public hearing as required by Florida statute 200.065. And whereas, the City of Benita Springs set forth the appropriations and revenue estimate for the budget for fiscal year 2023-2024 as follows. Expenditures: general fund, $20,652,406; special revenue, $5,384,878; debt service, $1,538,760; capital projects, $33,572,867; total all funds, $61,148,911. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by city council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
No.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Passes.
Okay, that should wrap up our public comment. Any public comment on the budget that we approved? Okay, then we're adjourned. Okay, now, if we would like to, we can call the order, the city council meeting. If you'd like to give another invocation, please rise. This is the way it is.
I'd be delighted to open us in prayer again. Would you bow your heads and say a prayer with me? Gracious God, we do give you thanks. We thank you again for all that you give to us, and pray, oh Lord, for the wisdom that you have created the world with to be present with our city council members as they make important decisions that affect the quality of life of many people. And we pray all these things in the name of the God in whom I trust. Amen.
Pledge allegiance on three, one, two.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Okay, anybody up for a break?
No.
No? No? Okay. Moving along here. Approval of the agenda, no problem there. Mayor's welcome, welcome, folks. I'm glad to see somebody's here. Thank you for coming and your concern about the city. It's our, it's your city, my city, it's everybody's cities in this country. So please be involved. Let's see here. Mayor's welcome. Public comment? Any public? No public comment?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments on it?
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Yeah, this is the time when you ask for comment on the consent agenda. Do we have any comment afterwards?
There are two cottages up for lease, and there are five candidates, so don't we need to select who gets the cottages?
Each of the individual green sheets identified the Art and Public Places Board's recommendation, so by approving the consent agenda, you approve that tenant for that cottage.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay, this one, Laura Carr's, number nine, a city boards and committees discussion. Thank you, Laura.
Okay. Well, as you folks know, the last meeting, I thought we should have a discussion on ways that we could make our boards and our various advisory committees more efficient. So tonight I'd like to discuss focusing staff to draft ways that the advisory boards could be more efficient, ways that the city can lower its costs, lower costs to developers as well. For example, many jurisdictions do not separate zoning and LPA, so we could combine them. So I would like to suggest that we take what staff comes back with, and I'm hoping that the staff would also take into account the time and energy that staff puts into meetings, the time and energy that our very variable volunteers do, as well as developers and their representations. So basically, I'm looking for a motion to direct staff to draft suggestions of steamlining the zoning process, to eliminate redundancy among our community boards, and to increase efficiency across all committees regarding time, money, and energy.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Yes, Fred.
Yeah, I, well, I think there's a little more to it. And some of the things I think we ought to include in this is that every two years they get voted on reappointment, because this thing of some of them sitting there for years and not even, we abandoned that back, I think, when Simmons was about halfway through his term. And I think that was a bad decision. We all get elected. They should be elected. I don't have a problem with somebody staying like Rex Sims that was good for probably 20 years, I think, damn near. But I think that a lot of them should, we should, we need to vote on them. And the other thing, I know the mayor's going to disagree with me, but the way we were doing it is the way we ought to do that. And that is, everybody that's up for election is on a ballot, plus anybody new that put in for that committee, and it's printed ahead of time, and it goes around the table, and the top seven vote-getters, they get elected, and the others try the next time. I think that's real, 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 real important. And it eliminates any one person saying, this is a slate that we ought to vote for.
Well, exactly. I'm not, I'm not arguing that.
Yeah. I think that's one of the things, staff, I'm saying it for the benefit of staff as much as you guys. I think that's real important, and I think the other thing we ought to do is look at the possibility of combining LPA with zoning.
I agree.
And, but keep the number at seven.
Yes, of course.
So I'm done.
Yes, sir. Just a comment on all the building and, or, I'm sorry, all of the advisory boards and committees. We all appreciate the fact that these are volunteer positions. They don't get paid. However, when you volunteer or commit to something, you know what the rules are up front. I don't believe any of our committees meet more than once a month.
Not typically, unless there's something pending.
And some, it's every two months.
Remember in September, we.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So the time that people are committing towards this, they should be able to know that it's available. I've seen, and thank you, Laura, for pointing it out, but if you can't be at a meeting or prepared, and you miss at least two a year, I think you need to step down. And if people aren't willing to do that, then we just put in, the rules are, if you miss two meetings in a, in a year, then you need, thank you for your service. We'll find somebody that wants to be at the meetings. And people showing up not prepared for meetings, I got a problem with that, too. So something as important as building and zoning, having people reading the agenda and reading what's on there at the meeting, not appropriate. That's how it feels like that.
Agreed. So.
I've seen some, I've been to this meeting where you were talking about last time, Laura. This is what they handed them, and it's very confusing. It's very confusing. It's either this or that. It's either 300 or it's 224 units, or it's 300, and it's living, independent living units, and 75 assisted living beds or whatever. They come all kinds of different ways. And they got five millions, five acres here, and one tenth acre here. It's all, it's all to their favor.
Well.
You know, it's, it's fine. And the people that are on that committee have very strong feelings, and that's why we hired people that have strong feelings. And they get through it eventually. They make up, they come to an agreement, and they, they vent all the different sides of the things. And I don't hear them complaining. So I don't see, now we had talked about meeting quarterly for these meetings. Now, the zoning and tree advisory board, they only have to meet when they have something on the agenda. So what other, what other, now that you've got the outreach.
Yeah, I would say with outreach, I mean, they actually could probably benefit from more, because they, they have kind of, they have things coming up, and four times isn't a lot, because they do two events. So, but, that being said, quorum's been an issue, too, just like with all the other committees. So, you know, I, I like, I don't, what Fred said and Nigel said, I essentially am in agreement with. I don't think, you know, I like the idea of everybody who's on the committees currently, you know. I'm not saying that we're clearing house. I don't think that's what Laura's intent actually is. But I think it's kind of making it more functional, probably, not to speak for you, but if I, I think we actually might agree on this, maybe, potentially. So.
We agree on it.
I hear you.
You'd be surprised. You'd be very surprised.
I think if, having them there together at the same time, I think from staff perspective, it gives us a lot of value on a city level. And having those two things together does make sense. And then we're not dealing with, even if we have the strongest of personalities, at least it's on one board and not on two. And so we're not, you know, maybe every now and then it's an issue, but I don't think if it's, if it becomes a more structured flow-through, and they're both there, I think that the behavior, number one, is going to be better, but I think the overall efficiency will be better. And I think we'll spend less money and time from a staff perspective. So for those reasons, I've, I think I am in agreement with it, actually.
If I may, Ms. Mayor, you know, we're up here, we're the seven people that got elected to represent the city, and I know probably more than most people in the city, we talked to a lot of people. And I was thinking about Roger Brunswick. I think we all remember Roger. When he was on building and zoning, he did a heck of a good job. Took him about a year or two to get ramped up, but he left his business at the door and took care of it. And one of the things that, I talked to a friend of his, who said, you know, it would be great if you guys went out and found maybe a retired engineer or a retired architect, somebody that wouldn't have any conflict of interest. And I thought, well, that's genius, brilliant. He said, well, Roger talked about that. Roger, even from the grave, is giving us good advice. And I think with all the people that we know, how hard would it be for us to just spend a little bit of time, think about some of the folks we do know, and reach out? The building and zoning, I'm not going to say it's the most important, but it certainly may be the most impactful on the city. So let's look for some folks that really could benefit the city, make our, make our jobs easier. I would challenge you all to that. I'll, I'll step up. I'll, I'll find some candidates.
And many on the boards, and many on the boards are all, you know, doing the best, hopefully.
Doing the best they can.
So just logistically, because since there seems to be a sense of agreement, would there be two, okay, so there goes 14, and then we'll go down to seven?
Mm-hmm.
Mix of the two. So you kind of get, you know, three from one, four from the other, potentially, or whatever, or a hybrid model of that.
How are we going to say, you're going to line them up like for a baseball team, you know?
That's why we asked staff to draft.
What the options, how we could look at it.
And then people's situations have changed. They can stay on a list to then come back in two years if they want.
Ideally, we, as a council, should be doing the zoning and the council. We're lazy. We don't have the time to do what those volunteers do. This is our responsibility. They come to a decision, and sometimes we don't agree with it. And then we're slapping them in the face by saying, oh, no, well, we don't agree with what you did. So it's our responsibility to do that. We may have a longer meeting, we have long, you know, but it's our responsibility. We're being lazy.
So with respect, I believe that every council person here comes prepared, and when we have zoning packets in front of us, we read the zoning packets. I happen to watch the zoning meetings as well. I have from the beginning. I was attending them. I stopped. I felt that there was a disruption if I was there. So I watched them at home, and everyone here, though, reads the zoning. We don't come in like going, saying, oh, gosh, we have this ordinance in front of us, or we have this in front of us. We come prepared. And so what I'd like to do is call the question, do we direct staff to come up with combining zoning and LPA, and to eliminate redundancies, and, and to direct different committees on what their job is? Like, what, what is it that they're asked to do? So that we'd be very specific. And I think that Derek and Carly could come up with something that is fabulous.
City, city attorney, are you there?
I am.
Okay, what's your opinion about the situation?
Derek in the sky.
My, I mean, my recommendation would be just let, let staff come back with a couple options. You know, just, you know, for everybody's recollection, all the matters that come to the zoning board or to the LPA do ultimately come to the city council anyway. I, I think really what we'll, we'll probably come up with a couple of different recommendations, and maybe a little harder with some of the other advisory committees. I know that if you've paid attention the last couple of years, the Village of Estero create, combined all of their land use-related committees, architectural, zoning, LPA into one super committee. I think we'd probably want to pick their brain, see how that's worked out, and give recommendations based on some of that experience. Has it made it easier? Has it made it harder? But let, let us dig into it a little bit and come back with some recommendations.
Okay, well, you, some time ago, we talked about eliminating some of the advisory committees, and you said, oh, you don't want to do that. You have everybody upset. So.
Well, there, there are some, some committees that, excuse me, there are some committees that you're required to have, like the LPA by state law. Now, you can make the LPA your staff, you can make it yourselves, but that doesn't really make anything easier. It makes it harder to digest for the public and for yourself, to not see it go through the process a little bit longer. Obviously, if you eliminate committees that you've had volunteers on for many years, that could, you know, upset people. It could also, you know, discourage other, other members from joining. We have had problems with attendance in some committees. We, so I think we'll come, we'll come back to his recommendations on the total number and what committees to look at. And then ultimately, you guys are going to make the decision.
Okay, thank you, Derek.
Yeah.
Question's been called.
We're going to vote on having staff.
Right.
Analyze it.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Okay. Got the flea market, the promenade?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions on that?
I believe that was approved.
That was on the.
Yeah, so you're at.
Right now, we're on city attorneys' items.
Number 10.
Yeah, we're on, city attorney, here we go again.
I, I've got no items, thank you.
You're done.
Thank you.
City manager.
Yes, thank you. We had been requested to bring back a policy regarding a potential administrative code for traffic fatality memorials. We put together a policy here for your review. If this is something you're comfortable with and want to provide direction on, we'd be looking for an approval. We did take some notes from the last meeting. We provided guidance. There's an opportunity to reserve the items at the recreation center for up to 30 days. We will make an effort to reach, if there's a possibility to reach out to the family member or the person who placed it, but we, we didn't want to guarantee that within the administrative code if there's no way of tracking, tracking that down.
Now, can we make it retroactive? Probably not. Some of these have been there for six months already.
I think that the most appropriate way to handle it is if it's approved this evening, we would start, and we're aware of it, starting tomorrow, we can work with Tony's staff on documentation.
The clock would have to start tomorrow.
Correct, tomorrow.
Yeah, it can't be retroactive.
Yeah. I have a comment.
Yes.
I'm in favor of this. But we're also going to do a park right out front of City Hall, and we're going to have people sitting there. And honestly, that turn can be very tricky and can be a distraction. I've seen, actually, there was an accident on the way over. I've seen, actually, there was an accident on the way over here, um, just past Spanish Wells Gate. But people kind of like start looking around and we're looking at memorials, so we're removing them. But we're going to put a park in front of City Hall and then people aren't going to be looking and being distracted. I just find it a little bit of a contradiction, but that's me. So I support, um, the memorials having a timeframe. But I do question, though, putting in a park that causes equal distraction.
I, I believe they're going to be set back far enough that you'd be able to see coming and going. But one thing about these, uh, memorials, about this roadside, is nothing in the medial. Eliminate the medial in the middle of the road. We can eliminate that.
So, so if it's in the right of way, the city's own property of the right of way, and it's identified, we would have the ability to remove it.
But most of it said roadside, most said roadside. I'm saying if it's a divided highway, I don't want them out in the middle.
This is an after-the-fact type policy. So, we talked about this at the last meeting. What you're talking about would be if someone came to us and asked for a permit to do something, and that's not what's happening. What happens is overnight, someone sets this up. And so, under, appreciate your comments, but we're, we're reacting to what's going on. And so we're reacting to it and trying to be sensitive to the folks that, you know, don't appreciate the memorial and trying to react to the person who lost their loved one in the, in the, in the roadway. Um, and so there's really no way to, to proactively do this because we don't know who the folks are that are putting these in the median.
Uh, there's also in that, in that, uh, proposal, if you can't cut the grass, you know, if, I'm saying in the medial, you got a medial strip with all nice trees and stuff. Uh, again, on the sides of the road is one thing, and in the middle of the road, that's a different thing.
But also.
I understand your point, that people do whatever they want to do.
Uh, but also recognize there's an ability, should any memorial be placed, whether it's part of this policy or not, that's a, uh, problem for our Public Works Department. They already have the ability to remove that. So this is just another opportunity for us to try to do some outreach and to reserve whatever memorial items they place there for a while. But if there's an immediate traffic issue or if we're notified of a safety hazard, we're already going to have to remove those.
Now, does the state of Florida have any regulations on state roads like forty-one?
Or seventy-five?
Yes, the state of Florida does have a regulations and it does have a program that, that they, that they operate. This is only for city right of ways.
The forty-one's not a city road, so you can put it.
Correct.
So you can put it anywhere on forty-one?
No, you have to follow FDOT's policy and procedures.
Uh, FDOT has a policy?
They do have a roadside memorial policy and there's a, I think they have a program as well.
Okay, well, let's make sure we got them all, all involved. Yes, sir.
Oh, Jesse.
Yes, Jesse.
Yes, I was going to say, uh, do we want to have somebody from staff or one of us kind of, I mean, it's short, uh, but put the five points of what the policy are going to be. Because I know that there's people who are watching this meeting who have been in touch with us on this numerous times. So I, just so we have absolute clarity on what the policy is for people who are listening, who didn't go through the hundred and seventy pages to try to find out where it is, let them hear a nice summary of exactly what this encompasses. Um, I think that would be great. I don't mind doing it if, if, or somebody else can read it, Matt or Arlene, whatever, but.
Tony Staff will be helping us initiate the, um, recording of the items. So, Tony, if you wanted to come up real quick and just a quick, uh, and second wrap-up of this area.
Yeah, it's hard to keep track of all the laws and regulations.
For the record, Tony Backers, Neighborhood Services. So the, the policy is, is pretty simple. When something is, is discovered in a city right of way, there'll be six months from the point of it being observed to be removed. Uh, we will probably find out from Public Works who are going to do the maintenance. They'll advise us. We'll go out and notice it. So we'll put something out there for the person who's placed it there, the date of discovery and the date of removal and where they can actually come to retrieve it at the end of the six months. If it becomes on, excuse me, like Arlene had referenced, if at any point it's, it's a, a traffic issue, if it's, um, affects routine maintenance, it can be removed by city staff anyway. So anything like that is, is just going to be taken and it, and again, it will be held at, at, uh, a, a city facility. So, um, kind of, nothing for infrastructure. They can't put them up hap- hazardous. It's trying to organize something that's kind of unorganized. That's the best way and sensitive to everybody.
About private roads, do we have any jurisdiction over a private road?
We do not. This is for City of Vinny Springs Public Right-of-Way.
Put your memorials on a private road? Okay.
Well, that would be up to the Neighborhood Association or the owner of the private road.
You can put signs on a private road? Any kind of sign?
No. Depending on the signage, there might be a probability that would require to go through the Community Development Department, especially if it's traffic maintenance signage or directional signage. Um, but each, also homeowners associations have requirements for signage as well. So if they're a deeded homeowners association, there might be requirements that they have that that individual property owner would have to file if they're within that, um, homeowners association. But private roads, depending on what it is, uh, could potentially require a permit from Community Development.
There's a lot of private roads and, I don't know, there's a lot of private roads. You put a garage sale, yard sale, all these different signs.
I think the likelihood that someone is going to need a roadside memorial on a private road, they're generally local streets. And, you know, these memorials are springing up from traffic accidents where someone's died. So yes, that may happen, but it's not likely to occur. It's more likely to occur on the, the main thoroughfares.
So can we call, oh, sorry, now.
If I may, Tony, how many issues have we had in the last year, ballpark figure?
That's come to my department's attention?
Exactly.
One.
One?
There's more than that, though.
But I mean, we're not talking about an epidemic here.
No.
And now we've got some rules and regulations, I think, should be, are you okay with what we're doing? Things going to help you and your staff?
I, I'm fine with whatever the council chooses.
You should run for office, Tony.
I'm worried about putting them on, putting signs, regular for-sale signs and all these different signs on all these private roads. We have a, a ton of private roads in this city, but you can't, you can't touch them, huh?
On private property, we're very limited what we can and cannot do with people's own personal property if they want to put up a sale, for-sale sign. You know, people can have yard sales.
Private road is a private road. It's private property, right?
Yes.
Even though the public can use it, the mailman goes down it and, that's right.
Yes. It's a, it's a different circumstance of what's in front of, of, uh, the council right now, but, uh, yeah, this, this.
Okay, so could we call the question?
So I, I've made a motion to approve. It probably needs a second.
A second?
Go call.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
I still have a question.
What?
I, I still had a question.
Oh, I didn't really.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And, and it's just real quick and I'm, I, if we don't make an, if we don't do the ordinance, what is the, what liabilities are we even looking at from a city standpoint by not having an ordinance?
Currently, there would be no, uh, there's no descrip- if, if the, if it is an issue or a concern, Public Works has the ability to remove it now, not under a complaint of, of aesthetics. It's if it's a, if, if there would be an issue as to it's a traffic concern or a safety issue or a maintenance issue. Uh, they have the ability to remove it now. There's no requirement or policy as to maintain that.
I, I think you have a political liability. The people that are complaining about this and the people that are putting these up are both very passionate about the issue. And if you have no policy, you're leaving your staff with no clear, cogent way to, to adjudicate this.
Very clear, very clear.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Um, thank you. Before I.
Hurricane Ian Recovery.
Yes, before I get to that update, I just want to provide a couple of additional updates. Um, we want, we were made aware that the Lee County delegation meeting will be held October thirtieth. Uh, that's a Monday from nine AM to twelve PM. Um, so at our next city council meeting, we'll be coming forward with, um, dra- we'll also in the interim be emailing you last year's legislative priorities. Um, we'll be working with our new lobbyist on drafting, um, our current, for twenty-twenty-three legislative priorities. We would ask that we have a vote from the council, um, prior to that October thirtieth, uh, delegation meeting with your direction on how you'd like to proceed with your legislative priorities because we'll need to submit those to the Lee County delegation. Um, and also, um, in the past, Matt and myself have been your representative at that delegation. Um, we're happy to do that again if that's the pleasure of the council. Um, additionally, uh, December seventh, we are working to, uh, schedule a comprehensive plan workshop for the public with Dr. Margaret Banyan. She'll be here at that time, most likely, um, at your first meeting in December. She'll also, uh, be in, be here to provide a presentation as well with an update on our progress. Um, also, a- as far as Hurricane Ian recovery, uh, Matt and I have continued conversations with the Lee County managers, staff and team regarding, um, the CDBGDR process. We've also been advised on, um, we understand that the, um, the, the recovery task force, um, has canceled a few meetings so they can catch up on some initiatives that they're receiving from Lee County staff. And, um, we're receiving the draft information from the potential, um, program that, that will be laid out by their consultant, which is Haggerty, for us to review. Um, the now goal of, of, of the, of the actual recovery plan that will be, uh, finalized is that the idea would be that each jurisdiction would review our section and, uh, you would all formally vote on a recommendation to, for that. And then we would, um, forward that to the Lee County Board of County Commissioners and they would, um, accept, um, the actual, um, plans from each jurisdiction, um, all in one encompassed program. Uh, yeah, after the first of the year. That's the plan.
Okay, uh.
And then.
Do you have a, a video or something?
Yes, yes. So what we wanted to share with you is we wanted to recognize for our community, um, that September twenty-eighth, um, will be the one-year anniversary of Hurricane Ian. Um, in the past, we did create a, a video kind of commemorating how we moved through, um, Hurricane Irma. Um, so the communications staff has, uh, worked on that video tonight. Um, this would be our tribute towards the one-year anniversary. We plan on, um, showing this on Benita TV, um, our websites and social media as well to, um, share our thoughts and well wishes, um, as we say, uh, Benita strong.
Before we get started, I want to thank Arlene for the many, many hours of keeping in touch during these storms. She keeps me in touch. She keeps us all in touch. Gets three, three, three o'clock in the morning phone calls. She answers the phone and she's taking care of the city and I applaud her. Yes, sir.
Ready? Yes.
Folks, we're on the edge of a category five hurricane here. Now, the outer bands of the hurricane have already spawned several reported tornadoes across Florida, causing damage to homes and knocking out power to more than fifty thousand people so far. Here in the western side of the state, you've got two and a half million people under evacuation orders. South of where we are, near Fort Myers and Punta Gorda, the National Hurricane Center is now projecting a storm surge up, up to sixteen feet. That is nearly two stories.
You're broken down and tired of living life on the merry-go-round. And you can't find a fighter, but I see it in you, so we can walk it out. Ooh, mountains. We can walk it out and ooh.
That's many of these. I love this. That's sacred, sure. That's why I live.
And I rise up, I like the waves, I rise up in spite of the ache, I rise up.
It's a tree on the park. It's a mobile home park, forty years.
And the red thing was the only generator.
Very well done.
We'll continue to share this and the commemoration of, uh, the anniversary on both of our media, social media, uh, TV ninety-eight and, um, our website as well.
Okay, anything else, Arlene?
That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, let's start with Nigel's. Now, what do you got, anything to report for us?
Um, nothing on TDC because we did not have a meeting this month. Um, but I had the opportunity to do a little traveling over the last week. And, um, I know we're looking at, um, upgrading downtown and the splash pad concept. I was amazed at how many towns in America have splash pads. And the only thing I would ask staff when you're looking at all these things is there are great things about them and then there are challenges after the fact. So I think we've got a huge opportunity to learn from them before we make any decisions and not just rely on vendors and what they say, but look at the cities that already have them.
Okay, Amy, you got anything?
Jamie does. Um, she, uh, yeah, I went to the Vinny Springs Fire Department, held their September eleventh ceremony. It was beautiful. Uh, mayor and council members, um, attended. And, um, from the fire department side, their millage is staying the same this year and that's all that there was to report on that.
Hey, Fred, I'm supposed to mix this up. I missed somebody. Let me know.
Probably. Uh, a cou- couple things. I wanted to get everybody up to speed on something Florida League of Cities is going to be pushing as a legislative priority, but, uh, there. but, uh, they're trying to sort out some of the, which ones they'll go with because each committee, they try and have one main one and then a secondary. But on the one I'm on, which is called, uh, Utilities, Natural Resources and Public Works, there's a lot of stuff going on we ought to all be concerned about because it's gonna, it can affect all of our health for years, probably at least fifty. There's been plastics that have been made that have got a, a product in them and it's in a lot of common plastics. Your anti-stick coating is full of it. These cookware cans, they're plastic. When you heat them up, it comes out. But EPA, first of all, this ingredient that comes out is cumulative. So that means if you put a drop of water in a glass and another drop, you got two glass. And the more you have, it stays in your body. It's, it's, it's certain, certain chemicals, mercury and others accumulate, they don't go away. Your body doesn't process and get rid of them. Currently, uh, they're looking at going from like four hundred units per, per billion down to like forty and then maybe four. So the, the FP, and bad part about it, there's a little bit, there's bad in anything good. Whoever owns the property, even though they didn't cause it, if you own it, you're gonna be expected to step up and fix it. The government's gonna try and help you, of course, but that, so that, that's, and you know, sometimes you're better off not to have the government help you. But I, I just wanted to make you aware of that. Now, the other thing that I think we all need to know about, and I'm not sure that some know as much about it as others, but one of the things that passed in the last, uh, session was a bill called, I think it's, uh, Local Live. And, and that bill, now, first of all, they're not taking your rights away as a city, but they have changed one thing. They've said, if anybody is trying to do affordable housing, they have the right to ask city council for a hearing, not a zoning hearing. And as part of that, you go straight, you, they don't even go through zoning. They come in here and they, they ask you to waive certain parts of, of your zoning and your, uh, land development code. And the city council is given the authority by this law to do it. You don't have to go through zoning. And so there are different projects already that are being looked at. I know Benita Bay's got one of them, that they have the right to come in and ask for a hearing. And they have the right to ask you to waive certain things. Now, that doesn't mean you have to. So it's, this, this isn't all that bad. It's, it's simply to make it easier for us if we do want to do something, to not trip over our feet over a bunch of regulations and all that that would hamper it and, uh, but I think, I just want to make sure everybody knew it because I'm sure it's gonna happen a lot sooner than later. And then, and then we don't have to hear it if we don't want to.
This is Lee County's.
This is the state of Florida passed the law, so it's whole state of Florida.
With the, uh, affordable housing thing?
Affordable workplace housing, actually.
Workforce housing.
It's, it's, yeah, workforce. It's more, it's more oriented that way than what you call just straight low-income housing. Yeah.
Okay.
So I just want to, no, that's it. I just want to make everybody aware of it.
Thought maybe this had something to do with the Lee County Task Force?
No.
Okay, uh, Chris, you got anything for us tonight?
No, I think Arlene touched on the Resiliency Task Force did not meet, uh, last week, Friday. The meeting was canceled. We're gonna be meeting on the twenty-ninth. And I think that's, there's, there's an interplay here between county staff and Hagerty. They're working some things out. I think it will delay the final plan for resiliency maybe thirty to sixty days. So we're look, probably looking at a, at a January to February date. Uh, so that's going on. I would point out that, uh, also that, uh, Cape Coral is going to convert, uh, part of their light-duty trucks, uh, to EV. And, uh, so we'll, it'll be interesting to see how that all works out and, and what it means to, uh, Cape Coral. I know that they've got fifty-seven charging stations, uh, within a ten-mile radius of, uh, Cape Coral. So they're sort of moving on down the road, we're getting ready for electric vehicles. Something that the Technology Committee has been focused on. Uh, there's been a pickup in the installation of, uh, the smaller antennas, uh, by the, the, uh, by Verizon, T-Mobile, not so much on the part of AT&amp;T. Uh, but T, T-Mobile's getting very aggressive with putting in, uh, more, uh, of the smaller antennas in Benita Springs. Uh, I think that's, and pushing their 5G products. So for those that are on T-Mobile and on Verizon, uh, the service should be better. Hopefully, uh, AT&amp;T will respond. AT&amp;T's pretty good if you get up around Fort Myers. Down here, not so much. So we're pushing on that as well. So, um, that's about it.
Laura?
Um, I'm gonna save Saturday for Jesse.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm glad it rained. I'm glad it rained. That was, park was getting awful dry and brown. I'm glad we got some rain today.
I wasn't, but Jesse knows what I'm talking about. Um.
Yes, sir.
Correct. And I would like to also say that the following weekend, we have Halloween in the park at Riverside, um, that the city's putting on, family-friendly. And then we will be having our lighting contest starting on the fourth, we're judging downtown. So, uh, there'll be lights throughout New Year's. And then on the fifth, we have holiday in the park. And so, again, family-friendly and it'll be wonderful. And hopefully rooftop will be opened. And, uh, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jesse, sir?
Yes, sir. Um, a couple things. As far as the League of Cities stuff, well, first of all, as Laura alluded to, Saturday's Fiesta Benita, so please come join us. It's an annual, uh, event. It's been better every year. Uh, we don't have the global entertainer that we had last year, but I still think it's gonna be really good. It's gonna be, uh, a little bit smaller to scale, but very family-friendly and a lot of, a lot of stuff, uh, for the people. And I really hope, uh, you guys utilize that on Saturday.
And it starts at two, right?
Yep, yep.
Two o'clock.
So come on out. It's gonna be great. Um, as far as the League of Cities stuff goes, I understand what you're saying and how it could be helpful. I just, I take everything from League of Cities with a grain of salt because essentially they're worried about the League of Cities. And in our capacity, we have to be worried about us. That's the reality. Because we get limited asks with our legislators. When we ask, I am not carrying the water for the League of Cities because half of that stuff we may or may not even agree with. It may save us a headache potentially. Or are we gonna ask our senators for the things we need? I mean, League of Cities, I understand conceptually that we generally will agree with them, their home rule, but at the end of the day, their priorities don't necessarily equate to our priorities. And I think it's important, but it really made me think about our legislative asks for this next year because none of us expected that we were gonna get the entire thing funded, right? So all of the things that we had under that, we're kind of like, oh, well, maybe in a couple of years, when this actually comes to fruition, we might have to think about it. But, I mean, we might want to sharpen our pencils and really think about what this next ask is gonna be because I think the asks that were right behind it immediately were never really thought of as, hey, this is the VP. If something goes down, this is gonna happen. I never, I, I think they were more like, oh, we'll put this on the shelf for the next ten years and it could happen. I think it's a lot realer than that. And I think we might have a good chance of getting something next year. So I think as a city, we really need to focus in on what those are gonna be. And then last, I would just like to say with the, with the highway memorial, you know, all the emails and, and all that stuff, you know, I hope it brings those to an end, but, you know, to the families' side of this, you know. Uh, for me, this was a very personal one. This is sad for me. I have a brother who's got one of these in Detroit. He died in a car accident, so like, I see it when I go up there. But we have sixty thousand people in the city. We have, we don't have that many roads. You know, we can't have it look, uh, like we have, you know, a, a drag strip of death down our roads. And offend, essentially, if we were allowed, uh, to allow this for, in, in an open period of time forever, in time, that would just be the wrong thing for the city. But that, you know, the things that I was very important, you know, that were very important to me on this, you know, number one, this wasn't gonna be retroactive. Because I don't think that, you know, you can't, you can't go back and say, hey, we just made this policy and it's already been here, so now we have to do this. That's not fair to the family. So, you know, I think it not being retroactive was a big piece of this that made me feel better about it. And then also, you know, the idea is that anything that's gonna be there is gonna be able to be held in case the family wants to come and get it. For those of you who don't agree, because you've been through this, know these aren't always easy votes. And I'm sorry. And, uh, you know, I'm sorry, but sometimes you have to vote with what you, what you think is the right way and not always with your heart. So that's where I was on this one. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Uh, I think we covered everything in the study.
Nigel, do you have anything?
I was first.
Okay. Sorry.
You got me.
He started out. Anybody else got anything to say? First, uh, public comment, please? No public comment? Come on. You guys come in. Okay, I guess we're gonna have to go home. Hotel time. You'll have to go home.